Testing, testing. One, two, three.
I'd like to call the order of this meeting, the Hartford Select Board or Special Select Board Organizational Meeting, on Thursday, March, March 6, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Does anyone want to lead us?
Happy to.
Thank you, John.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh.
Sure.
All right. Next item, of course, we have to confirm that new members have sworn their oaths to the town clerk. I believe John confirmed.
Yes, I've heard from Lisa that she's sworn all of the three new members in. Is that correct? Yes.
Excellent. Okay. That's out of the way. Yeah, we're making progress. The main, so a lot of the stuff tonight is just going over, you know, telling you some materials for you to look at, and we'll take some action in the future. But the main thing is to reorganize the board positions. So the chair, vice chair, clerk. The chair, there's a list of responsibilities that we use as procedure for what the chair does. Generally, they run meetings, set the agenda, recognize people are going to speak. The vice chair attends agenda meetings and acts from the chair is not capable of being at the meeting. And then the clerk, who does sort of backup notes on minutes for the meetings. So basically recording votes, like if this person made a motion, this person seconded. Who was the vote? I think Lauren generally does the comprehensive minutes, but we have someone on the board who kind of, you know. You're not expected to be like the minutes of record, but kind of just, you know, during the meeting, you'll just make notes of motions.
I do the same as well, so we've got it covered between the three of us.
Yeah, but it's not particularly open.
Where is that information then stored, those notes that the clerk takes?
Well, I don't know. Mary was the last clerk. I don't know if you-
Well, if, if John needed help, you know, then I gave him my notes. And then we end up approving minutes, so I always read the, the minutes. Kim was always faster than I was at being able to identify if people's names were spelled wrong or something.
And then the minutes themselves are posted on the website.
Right, right.
Okay.
Along with agendas.
Are really in their own, whether it's a notebook or laptop, and then they're shared out to others as we.
Yeah, they're just sort of a backup. It's sort of like a personal note in case John or Lana said, oh, we didn't catch this.
The only official thing is the minutes that you all review and approve.
Right, right. And, you know, the, the thing that I just kept track of was pretty simple. During the meeting, you know, the motion was made by whom, sent it by whom, and what was, you know, the over, was it unanimous? Was it? Six, one, zero, whatever. Just real simple. Time to start, time that we end, and then some, then when we go into executive session, sometimes there's action that we took, that we take or not. And then usually that's the part that I make sure that I write up and send in to, to Lana if John's not there, hasn't taken notes.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I just was also going to mention the other piece is managing the Zoom for folks that are on the Zoom, which Kim had done. Sometimes that role has coincided with the clerk role. Last year, it didn't because Mary was clerk and then Kim said that she would still take, do the, as vice chair, she managed the Zoom. So that's just another thing that we'll have to think about.
We've heard, we've heard some scuttlebutt to the effect that Kim has been trying to educate Brandon on some of that. Have you expressed an interest in that?
I-
Helping wrangle the Zoom stuff?
I have not expressed an interest, but I'm not opposed to doing it.
To be determined. Yeah.
The other decision, the other unofficial decision is the person who keeps track of the timer. When it's public comment, you put the timer up, three minutes, just press the button.
And I just put a little-
But the only-
-thing over here because it gets distracting. All those seconds I don't want for people to see.
The only decisions we vote on are chair, vice chair.
Okay.
So what we're going to do here, starting with the chair, then we'll move to vice chair and clerk, is basically someone can make a motion for the board to appoint so-and-so as chair. If it gets a second, we'll discuss, you know, we can vote on. Once that's done, we'll move to the vice chair.
I move that we nominate Mary Erdi as Select Board Chair.
Second.
We have a motion, go second, go second. Any discussion? Sounds good. I would certainly welcome that. Mary's been here. She has institutional experience, you know, which you very well spoke. Any other discussion otherwise, we'll, we'll call the roll for this one. Eric?
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
Ida?
Hi.
Mary?
Oh, hi.
Ashley?
Hi.
Brandon?
Abstain, please.
I will vote aye, so it's six with an extension. All right. Mary, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so we'll go down the line here and- Okay, so we'll go down the line here, and I'll take a motion to elect a Vice Chair.
I'll make that motion to elect Mike as the Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a, we have a second, and is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So.
And abstain if you don't.
You're going to abstain? Okay. So the motion passes. All right, we'll do the same with the clerk. Is there a motion to elect a clerk of, of the Board? I motion to appoint Ashley. Okay, is there a second?
All second.
Okay, there's a motion to, for Ashley to be Vice, to be clerk, and a second by Mike. All those in favor?
Or should we say discussion?
Oh, it's our discussion, sorry.
Yeah. I think, given the information that you gave me prior to this, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Sure, good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I will continue to abstain. Thank you.
And do I vote for mine?
You can, yes, yes. All right, so the motion passes. All right, so we are on to review a list of Boards, Commissions, and Committees, review of Select Board Liaison Policy, and discuss liaison assignment process. You want to take?
Yes, and thankfully Lana is here to assist me as needed. But I do want to let you know that there's a number of Boards, Committees, and Commissions that are appointed by members of the Select Board. And there are materials that Lana has given each of you, identifying what those Boards, Committees, and Commissions that traditionally have Select Board Liaisons associated with them. And I would just encourage you to look those over, and at the March 18th meeting, we can have a discussion after you've become familiar with all of these roles as to who would like to serve as the Select Board Liaison to those various Boards, Committees, and Commissions.
Oh, Mike, sorry.
I just wanted to say, so I'm currently on like a few of these committees, but I'm happy if someone on the Board looks at one of those and says, hey, I really want to do that. I'm certainly fine with that. I mean, I'm on Sister City, the Aquatic Center, which apparently has never met, and then like School Board. So, you know, some of those are more involved than others. If anyone wants any of those, I'm happy to, to give them up or take on something else.
And as I say, as I say, in the, in the materials, you also have the Select Board's Liaison Policy, which kind of articulates what's expected of liaisons.
Right.
Brandon, where's that?
Oh, thanks. I, I was just curious. I know Ida had been doing a little asking around about what the time commitment was for each of these, and I'm curious if you have any results at the moment.
Again, in these materials that Lana has put together, she's identified the meeting schedule and roughly the amount of time that they spend at these meetings.
It's in the packet that's on your desk.
Oh, neat.
And go ahead.
Thank you. I was going to just comment that as in, in all of these roles except two where the Board Member is appointed, so the H. Corey and the Housing and Homeless Committee. It just seems like an opportunity for different, to be in different rooms. So having sat on the opposite side of the, of the stance and served on the Energy Commission and the Climate Advisory Committee, it was nice when we had different Board Members that we were, that were in the room with us. And so I don't know that, I would say that, think of that as well, like maybe it's not your passion, but maybe it's an area where you could learn and broaden your scope of understanding. So that's just one consideration when people are thinking about what to, what to sign up for.
Thank you, Eric. And I would say the same thing as, as Mike. I have been on Conservation Commission for three years, and up until our last Board Member who resigned early, I was on Parks and Rec, and after that I have been on, well, even before that, last year I was on H. Corey. And I don't want anyone to feel like I own any of those. So I just want to make sure that we do well by all of them. I will say it's, it's actually quite fun to get to know people. And I spent a lot of time the first couple of years attending almost every meeting in person, just so I got a chance. And you don't have to do that, but for me, it was a little bit, it was good. I felt like I really got to know people. I.
Yeah, just to sort of continue the reflection, I think, you know, similar to what Mike and Mary have shared, like I, I have enjoyed the connection to the Committees that I'm on. I haven't been able to dedicate as much time to them as maybe I would hope. So, you know, hoping that New Year can do more involvement with specific, you know, attending meetings. But I will say that if, yeah, so I don't have to have a strong attachment. I mean, the Energy Commission is a really great group of people. If someone's passionate about that, you can certainly let us know when we make these decisions, and we can kind of sort that through. And then I'm also on the treeboard in Resilient Hartford, and yeah, similarly, they're great groups of folks. I feel like I, yeah, if, if someone has, I don't know, I don't want to say like I fell short, but I didn't do, I didn't, I wasn't as evolved as maybe I like to be. So if anyone is eager to get involved with those, that's definitely up for discussion.
And I think also, obviously, you all have to consider if you have some, you know, what nights, days that you have of the time for, for this, if you're going to attend either hybrid or in person, so. Okay. So I guess we will move on.
And we'll talk to everybody on March 18th about this topic.
Okay, and so does anybody need anything more discussion of the liaison assignment process before we move on? All right, thank you. And review orientation materials for new members. That must be you, John.
Yes, well, again, me and Lana. Lana has done a marvelous job putting together a nice set of materials for orientation for new Select Board Members, and it's kind of an update for the other books for people who are already on the Board, things that have been updated in recent months. So just to list them, there's the Hartford News and Social Media Links, there's the contact list, which we will be updating now that we know how to reach all of the new members. Select Board Meetings Compensation Timesheet. Some information about Vermont's Open Meeting Law, the current Hartford Select Board Rules of Procedure and Code of Conduct. These two, the Rules of Procedure and Code of Conduct, will also be on the March 18th agenda because best practices is that the Board reviews and readopts or amends them annually. So we're going to give you all that opportunity to put your own stamp on it. There, of course, is that Liaison Policy. There's information about licensing regarding both liquor control and cannabis control. That's a function that you folks will serve on occasion. There's Conflict of Interest Information. There's the Updated Town Charter. There's the Employee Handbook. There's the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Essentials, which describes legal roles and responsibilities of Select Board Members and others in our organization. There is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Select Board Manual and Robert's Rules of Procedure. Also in your notebook, there's the 2025 Annual Select Board Calendar Cycle, so you know what's coming up throughout the year. Also, a Select Board Meeting Schedule. There is a Town of Hartford Holiday Schedule, so you know when we might expect that this building would be closed, for example. And a Town of Hartford Organizational Chart, which I think is going to be helpful to you all. Lana also points out that you should really follow the link on the Town's website to sign up for the Hartford News. You probably have seen it. It's every other month, right after a Select Board Meeting usually, giving you, as well as the members of the community, an update on what's happening in Hartford. And there's also instructions on how to to do, to make contact with other social media, for example, the Facebook page, Instagram, X formerly known as Twitter and LinkedIn. I do want to also mention a couple of other things, if I can, and that is that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, you will all want to log in there, create your account in their portal so that they can give you updated mailings from time to time about available trainings that might be of interest to you. Generally speaking, Select Board Members get free or radically reduced prices for these things. So whenever you see the cart that they've established, point out that you're through, through the Town, a member of the LCT or PASSIVE, our insurance carrier, and that'll get us the lowest rates for your participation. I will be emailing each of you a survey from Dana Clausen, our Sustainability Coordinator, who would like to offer a tour of WABA next weekend, sometime next weekend, and this will be a survey about your availability and interest. The ice rink is an important town amenity. It's going to close for the season after next weekend, so this would be a final good chance to get a, a, a behind-the-scenes tour of that facility. So stay tuned for that email from me. Please also think about the Vermont League of Cities and Towns' offer to host a team-building exercise with the new Select Board. They're talking about having a two- to three-hour retreat for a couple of towns in Vermont that could benefit from this supplemental kind of training and team-building. And I've nominated the Town of Hartford as one of those two towns, perhaps largely because we now have five members of the seven with one year or less in terms of Select Board experience. And so this might be a good opportunity for lots of fresh people, fresh faces, to develop relationships and build a team here on this board. So we might be learning more about that from VLCT, but it might be something that's available to us in, say, the May or June timeframe. And then finally, I do want to emphasize that the Select Board Institute Training from Vermont League of Cities and Towns is scheduled to take place Saturday, March 22nd. It's a hybrid, so you can go to, I think, Montpelier to attend in person and meet your colleagues, or you can do so online. I think it generally runs from nine o'clock to about two o'clock in the afternoon. And the idea is basically just to give an overview of the role of a Select Board Member and what you can expect to deal with, and what kind of opportunities there are to learn more about your role by ending, by contacting Vermont League of Cities and Towns with questions, concerns, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of information coming at you. You don't expect you all to know it immediately, but I just wanted to make sure of those, that you're aware of those opportunities. Thanks.
What John was just talking about, the VLCT Select Board, it used to be called Select Board Essentials. And when they started it, it started as hybrid because it was during our COVID. And I went two years in a row, and both times it was amazing. It, I learned so much, and there was probably an hour when all these town people could call in with all these questions, and that was equally wonderful, because then you learn about things that you don't think about normally until you're right in the, in the Select Board seat, you know. I would have, I'm glad he asked that question, she asked that question, because something, things come up all the time that are unusual, different, and we all need kind of a refresher.
So many other towns have had similar experiences to ours, and it's always great to learn from their mistakes or get best tips or ideas from VLCT, which ministers to all of the towns in Vermont. So always good to, to know that we're not alone. By the way, if anybody would like to attend that Select Board Essentials, or whatever they're calling it now, and they want to do so in person to rub elbows with their colleagues across the state, just let me know. I'd be happy to go up with you and attend with you, and maybe we can chat both coming and going and learn a lot that way, too. So.
Okay, everybody comfortable with that? Eric?
Just a quick question. The packet or the binder is awesome. Thank you very much. I was wondering, since I, it's got a ton of valuable information in it, but I don't foresee lugging it around if there is like an archive file with everything that you use to generate this that I might, or that members might have a copy of.
It's on my computer.
It could certainly be done. We can do some scanning and create something that we can.
If it doesn't cause a lot of extra work, it might be useful. I have some of these documents. I know where some, some of them can be found. But it, if it was all in one folder, which then you generated an archive file from and, and passed that on, it might, might be.
It's a very good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay. I'm sorry.
I just had a quick thing to note. The, I inquired last year around the start of this season where VLCT was offering quite a lot of trainings. And when you go through their portal and sign up for training and enter that you're part of PASSIVE, usually get a nice rate, five or $10 or something like this. Turns out, we are not paying that out of pocket. VLCT bills the Town.
Yes, of course.
And I inquired whether we're responsible for that, and I, I heard the answer was no.
No, we've got a budget for training, and I've always felt like any dollar spent on training is probably one of the best dollars a town could possibly spend, so.
Thank you, thank you, Brandon. Okay, so the real last order of business is a motion. We had to leave it until this, at our last Select Board Meeting, and so that we could ratify payroll and accounts payable at this time.
Yeah, we needed a signature a couple of days ago in order to meet payroll, and it was agreed that Mike could do so until we could ratify it at the next meeting, and here's the next meeting.
Yes, okay, so I'll take a motion to ratify payroll and accounts payable.
Madam Chair, I move it to Select Board Ratify Payroll and Accounts Payable, approved by Select Board Chair between 21825 and 3625.
Okay, we have a motion by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, just one note. Did you have something else?
This was the motion that we gave them, and he didn't.
Yes.
Okay, can we have?
Because it has dates and amount.
Yes, 2182025.
Yes, I think, I think he did say. Yeah, yeah. As long as you recited the same motion we have, we're fine. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you. And so, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Who was, who was, who was the second on that? Ah, Miranda, thank you.
Okay.
I abstain. I don't know if I need to.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I didn't, I, yeah.
Miranda, Ashley is, is abstaining.
Thank you.
So six, zero, one.
Yeah.
All right. So is, we're down to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Chair, I move it to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brandon. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
That's unanimous.